So are we not on television again?
Right, we won't be until they find somebody to work it. So, Mr. Chair, you're live.
You're live, okay. Newton-Jolene Board of Appeals meeting that started at 7:05. Please stand for Pledge Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Reardon will be a voting member this evening to replace Trish McCarthy. Jim, would you take a roll call, please?
Mr. Kozak?
Here.
Mr. Sylvia?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Present.
Mr. Gibbs? Ms. Reardon?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Ms. White, you're on mute.
Oh, sorry, here. Can you not hear me?
Well, she's just unmuted. It shows her speaking right now.
Exactly.
And it lights up with that yellow ring around it. Yeah, well, Ms. White was just muted, but then she unmuted and our boxes lit up. Her box lit up like she was talking, but couldn't hear her.
She's muted.
Can you hear me now?
Now she's talking. But we can't hear.
We can't hear you.
I don't know.
He is on, but muted. No. I'll try it again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Reardon will be a voting member replacing Ms. McCarthy, who's absent. Tonight, we have a public, public hearing.
Yeah.
We all set to continue, Jim?
Jim, your microphone's on, you've got a reverb somewhere.
I'm sorry. Ms. Reardon is going to replace Ms. McCarthy as a voting member.
Jim, can you shut that off so we don't get the? It's the computer that's on.
Well, yeah, we're gonna hear ourselves.
Speaker on laptop.
Right, there you go.
Hey, try that.
It looks like we're ready.
We are.
We're ready now.
Are we ready? Jim, would you read out the public hearing, James and Tracy Ryan, please?
James and Tracy Ryan of Two Laurel Lane are requesting a public hearing for relief from Article 27, Section 8B, wetlands setback for a garage. The law does reference to Tax Map 5, Block 5, Lot 1-2.
Mr. Ryan, would you like to come up to the podium and make your presentation?
Hi, Jim Ryan, Two Laurel Lane. We did the preliminary hearing for a two-bay addition on the side of my garage.
This is not a preliminary meeting.
I understand that. Saying we already met for preliminary and then you guys came out and did a site visit. So I guess, I guess I'm just waiting on a determination from you guys.
Any questions, people?
I have a question on the tax.
I'm.
Well, the tax.
Twenty-four by twenty-four garage is all permitted.
Is all what?
That time, so it's all done.
Yes.
There is a garage, he's expanding the garage.
That's the back in thirteen, it was a garage, forty-nine by thirty-nine garage.
Correct.
Twelve, twenty-six, twenty-three, he got a permit for a twenty-four by twenty-four garage.
Right.
This says it's all built.
It was reused.
So he got the permit? Denied. Denied.
He didn't have a permit.
Yeah.
This says he has a permit. And that's when your taxes are gonna start on that date. That is incorrect.
That's an issue for him to take up with the assessor.
I'm just showing it.
Yeah, that's good intel.
It said you're all approved on this.
And built.
And built.
And built.
I didn't, I didn't get it.
Why is my car wet? Oh, we got it last time, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's right there.
There should be a letter going to the building department.
Wow.
Nice catch, Frank.
Saying.
I'll take it up with the assessor.
Okay.
It should say pending permits, not actual permits.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that the board would like to talk about? You know, after the, I'd like to make a couple of comments. After the walkthrough, and Mr. Ryan was nice enough to have us over there. And in looking at the water, as close as it is, and you're looking for twenty-six feet, I believe, for variance.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four feet. I, that scares me. Scares me for a couple of reasons. First of all, in the future, if you decide to sell your house and those two garages are there, built, it would be easy for somebody to start their own business in there with oil and everything else and could sleep in, you know? That does a possibility of future, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but couldn't that be done in anybody's garage?
That, that is correct, but the way we looked at your garage.
You could do that in the garage I have now.
Yep, yes, that's true. But so that's a concern that, that the amount of footage that we have. Because it's definitely wetlands and it's, I would like to see it cut back to one. That's my personal feeling. As opposed to, that way we can deal with, at least, I would feel more comfortable with, you know, a six or seven or eight foot variance, you know? Any comments about that with the rest of the board members? Their concern? Well, we're looking for a twenty-four foot variance. And we had, we had a walkthrough last, what was it, a couple of weeks ago?
The week after.
I missed that one.
I mean, I, I think that basically because of the nature of the wetland that's there, and it's basically just a little finger, that, yeah, yeah, all wetlands are important and should be protected, but I don't think that's a horribly important piece of wetland. And he still is twenty-seven feet away. It's because really that wetland developed very much from the culvert, the runoff from the road. It's where, I mean, it goes down into a much bigger wetland. But that's just a little finger and I.
Mr. Gibbs.
What?
For mistake.
I don't see any problems for putting an addition on the garage.
Well, yeah, I mean, at first, when I, when he came in last month, I was very concerned about putting it there and said, why don't you put it on the other side? When we did the site walk, it became very clear that putting it on the other side is not a viable option because of.
Utilities.
Utilities, and it's cool, and there's a, there's a whole lot of reasons why he can't put it on the other side.
And just.
I think.
Just to fill Mr. Gibbs in, he actually had this plan pulled because the old wetland plans showed this much further back.
It actually grew.
And, you know, it definitely has to be between the runoff of the driveway and the culvert and the roof.
It looks like it, it's mostly from the road. That's right where the.
Right, it's the culvert that comes down, all the way down Botlet, that kind of dumps into my ad there. I've got three acres and two-thirds of it is wetland, so I'm paying, already paying taxes on two-thirds.
Two acres of wetland.
Two acres of wetlands.
So, and I mean, it is going to be a concrete floor, all enclosed. If you're concerned about protecting the wetland, that might be an issue with protecting the wetland during construction. And you might want to put in a stipulation that erosion control has to be in place.
That's all the building.
Yeah, he'd probably want silt fence, hay bales.
Yeah. I mean, but other than that, I, I don't, I don't see, I don't see a whole lot of issue with it. I think, you know, and it seemed like, you know, last month, Trish, who I sort of lean on a bit for any conservation.
Well, we were hoping that.
Hoping she was here tonight, but she didn't seem to be too concerned about the, the wetland implication of this particular.
The only thing I can see is make sure there's no floor drains.
Oh, yeah, no, there would not be.
They're illegal anyways.
Right.
You know? Nope, the only way anything from the cars would be getting into that is with a floor drain, and you can't put them in anyways.
Yeah, good point, but I wouldn't be putting a floor drain in.
Mary, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. So all of us were there, well, Roger Ford, except for Mr. Gibbs and Trish was here. Is there anything else before we proceed with the reading the request?
I just wish we had the conservation report.
Yeah, yeah, we were kind of hoping for that. Unfortunately, it's not gonna happen, but whatever, this is out. There's no public input, there's nobody here, no abuders. Were there any abuders, Jim, that were notified?
The abuders were all notified.
Notified, so nobody's here.
And you, you didn't receive any input from anyone? Jim?
I checked with all them first.
Yeah.
You didn't receive any, any?
We just, we received no input from any abuders.
So seeing there's no public input, we will go through and read out the criteria and it will do a deliberative session. Thank you. Very good.
Criteria one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the pub, to the public interest. Ms. Reardon?
I'm sorry.
First criteria.
And I always have to stop and think of whether it's, whether a positive response is you want it or a negative response, so giving just would not.
Does everybody have their microphones on?
I'm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jim, can you hear me from the mic?
It could be atmospheric problems with my ears.
Yeah, I got hardly.
The question is, can Barbara hear us?
Yes, I can hear, thank you.
Barbara is always a big proponent of telling us when she can't hear us. But Jim's got the speaker muted, so we can't hear Barbara reply right now.
Yes, I can hear you.
Jamie about how he has it set up, it's slightly different this time.
So the, we're on the first one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. I agree with that.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Hamel?
Yes, it is not contrary to the public interest. For some of the reasons that I previously stated.
Mr. Sylvia?
I, I agree.
Mr. Kozak?
Yeah, I agree, I'm, I'm still a little bit concerned if you, if you. I gave everybody a copy tonight, and I probably should have talked about the tips for evaluating variance criteria. Because some of these, I don't think we're really doing a true follow-through when we were looking at these items. And if you look at the first one, and the variance would not be contrary to public, I'm talking about the tips for evaluating, and that first line that, that really disturbs it, does request unduly violate the basic objects, objectives of the zoning ordinance. And when I look at that, and I look at the twenty-four feet away, and are we really, that's, that's the issue I have. I know, Rod, you said that, that water could dissipate or whatever the heck, but I, I just, I have a serious issue with that. But that's why I wanted to give this out to everybody, so kind of review that before we go each one of the criteria. There's an awful lot of information here that we, we kind of like let go on the side. But I'll go along with the board and say I agree, but would agree with, with questions. Thank you.
Before I move on to the next one, from what I understand, the board is contemplating two potential conditions to its approval. One is the use of erosion control during the construction phase.
Yeah.
And two is that there are no floor drains allowed in the structure. So please, I'm seeing everybody nod their heads up and down.
Correct, yeah, okay, yeah.
I will ask when I finish the criteria if those are the conditions for approval.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Remember that while you're doing, while you're answering the questions, is that those two conditions will be implemented.
Okay.
Can, criteria two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Ms. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Based on the site visit, the other configurations of the building seem to create more hardship than the proposed building, so for that, I would say, yes, I do agree.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Criteria three, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Ms. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Four, if the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Ms. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah, that neighborhood and his neighbors in proximity to the proposed location is very spread out, so I see this being an issue.
Thank you. Mr. Kozak?
I would say yes also, yeah, that's my first trip down to that area of the town, and I, I agree with Mr. Silva that none of the houses were affected by it. Yes.
Criteria five, this is the two-potter, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship. One, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. Ms. Reardon?
It's based on the fact that there are utilities on the other side, and there is no way to put that there without creating an extremely high cost, I would say. Yes, that would create unnecessary hardship.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
And part two, the proposed use is a reasonable one. Ms. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the criteria have been met?
Met, okay. Hold the board for the.
Well, you would need a motion that.
We have a motion to either deny or.
A motion to grant the variance with the conditions of prohibiting any kind of, well, can we pause this for a second?
Okay. You want to use the boilerplate?
Do you want to use the boilerplate?
Facts of. It's within your purview and it would do substantial justice.
I, I'm just saying, do we want to be as nitty-gritty of floor drains, or do we just want to broaden it to many mechanical work that wouldn't, could contaminate the surrounding areas? Is what I wanted to ask. Because that would then encompass everything, right?
But I think that, that actually gets to be harder to enforce.
Okay.
I, I think that, that, if you stick to no floor drain.
Okay.
That, that's, that's, the building inspector inspects it once and that's.
That's fine.
No floor drains and.
Erosion.
Erosion control.
You're in, you're in construction.
Say a hundred feet of working area.
What Mr. Gibbs said.
Want to repeat that?
No floor drains and erosion control within a hundred feet of the building.
Within the construction area.
With, I was just gonna say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would that, excuse me, would that put the erosion control in the wetlands?
No, in, in the buffer between, between the construction area and the wetland. They got twenty-seven feet to put the, put the, put the silt fence in.
Right.
Yeah, it would be a silt saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, silt saws, yeah.
Only twenty-seven feet and he wants a hundred feet?
No, no, long, hundred feet.
Hundred feet long, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought you meant, I thought you meant from the.
No.
Okay. I understand.
Jim, could you read that back, what's in the, Mr. Gibbs was talking about?
Was it Mr. Gibbs that made the motion?
No.
With the.
Yeah, it was a joint venture.
Right.
Okay. You're moving to grant the relief sought, and I will put in from the, what it is, finding in fact that the plan falls within the purview of the ZBA, and substantial justice would be done, and with the conditions that erosion control be installed within the construction area, separating the new building from the, the wetlands, and that no floor drains be installed.
Correct.
Do, do we have a second on Mr. Silva's motion?
Mr. Gibbs, I already had you have made, having made the motion.
Then I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Reardon?
Hi.
Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
There you go. Welcome.
Have a good evening.
Yeah. Next up on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of last month of February.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from last month, providing they change my name to the correct spelling again.
Has anybody read the minutes? Does anybody have any changes?
I've got comments.
You've got what?
Comments.
Comments, okay.
First of all, I feel horrible. They, they, you've got ten pages of poorly edited transcript, and then when you get to the point where the motion to approve the variance, he went and didn't do transcript and cut out two-thirds of the conditions that were listed.
Okay.
This concern with the project down the street for taking the building down.
Yeah.
I tried getting the price in the office, and he threw it back at me. He said, I can't read this, it's, it is so mumble jumble, there are so many mistakes in it. I don't know what happened, but it's unreadable, the minutes.
I apologize, I take a transcript of the minutes and try to edit out everything, all of the internal dialogue that ends up in the middle of my transcripts, and condensing it down into what individual people said and take out the side comments because what happens is if there's any sort of side discussion, that actually gets woven into the transcript because it's based on every word that.
But we, they shouldn't be transcripts to start with. I, I think that the problem with this is you've got ten pages that could have been put down into two sentences. There was a discussion on what the condition should be. You know, the, the, especially in that case, the minutia of that discussion doesn't need to be recorded, and the motions do have to be recorded.
That's fair.
Okay. I'm, I can't give you an excuse.
It sounds like he just made your job easier.
The reason we, we do transcripts now is so that they're capable of standing up in court, obviously those.
These are not readable, they're not going to stand up in court.
Yeah.
Because one of the other things is, if you're going to edit them, you need to put in some punctuation. A period at the end of every paragraph just doesn't work, it makes it unreadable.
Okay. I I'm amazed that my minutes came out like that, but Pardemy wants to run in the back room and grab a copy of the minutes and quickly go through them because they, they do become difficult to edit.
Can, can I read one paragraph?
Okay.
Do you want? Miss, Mr. Hamel stated the original suggestion was twenty thousand, and that still was much less than it would cost, well, if, from what Jim said, if that might be a reasonable cost to the fire department to burn the house down and then crush it, so with twenty grand, it, it just doesn't make sense.
I realize, that, that's a good example of where the last bit that you read, Mr. Hamel didn't say, that is somebody else talking.
Oh, because that's where you pulled the transcript in, that's what you were talking about.
That's really what the problem is, you shouldn't be starting with the transcript.
Yeah.
Because then you get, what you need to do i, is to get the relevant points, and all of the rest of the discussion, it's just discussion, but you don't, you don't need to report it. This ain't seconds. It's minutes.
Because that, that was when like, that group was talking and this group was talking, and then we were talking, and Trish was talking, so that makes sense.
Oh, I.
Yeah, I got it.
The way that it is, it's, it's difficult to take what Zoom gives you
Yeah.
and turn it into a readable thing. I think that, that, that ends up being the problem at this point, is you're better off not starting that way.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion?
It might be easier to, to read that transcript rather than trying to listen to the tape over and over again. But, but.
Well, actually, the way I do it is, once I have the transcript, I have that up and I listen to the tape as I'm following along, looking for when people pause, that's the end of a sentence, throwing in commas where I think they're appropriate. And usually, what I call the, the junk verbiage that ends up in there, I usually manage to clip that out. I apologize, obviously, I did not do a very good job of proofing those. Um, I apologize. Obviously, I did not do a very good job of proofing those. Um.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me? This is Barbara.
If you'd like, I I will.
What?
Just hold up or pass in the minutes for another month though.
Right, that's up to.
Yeah. I mean, I think so, just like.
If you want, I'll go back through and re-edit.
What is the general feeling with the board? Have Jim go back over it?
Yeah, just make it.
Yeah.
Sound right.
Yeah.
It's all over the place.
I did find it hard to follow in some areas and the lack of punctuation in some areas made it
Because I mean, what what you ended up doing.
That we should maybe even consider is to not have so much side conversations because we're all.
Yeah, I I agree, yeah.
That's something that.
You know, and there was there was an awful lot of stuff going on at the the two ladies that were up there talking and so forth, and there were comments from us and back and forth, and it was, you know.
But really, it's sort of like on the second case that was held a- a- and it and Mr. Kozak asked the board uh, members questions and the board discussed the matter briefly, and that's all you really need. You could have gotten rid of about eight pages of this with with that kind of a comment.
Well, that's the deliberation versus the public hearing. The public hearing gets needs to read almost like a court transcript.
I don't believe that. You need to get the relevant, the names of the people who spoke and the relevant points that they made, not all of the garbage.
Okay, that's what I've been doing since I took over here is you've been getting not this, I apologize for this. This is obviously sloppy editing. But all of my minutes in the past have always been hearing quality.
Hmm.
And then when you get to other areas like deliberations, no, that the deliberation discussion doesn't get noted quite the same way because it's that's not a public hearing. But if the board would like me to to change the way I do them, that's.
I I think either way, this this particular one definitely needs to be gone through again.
Yeah.
I'm fine with either way. I would defer to, I would defer to Jim on how he wants to do it, whether he wants to do a transcript style, if he wants to cut out a chunk where he.
Yeah.
Stand what's going on.
But.
This one's. So as far as how it's done, I would defer to Jim, but I think you know, yeah, this this particular set needs to be redone.
We gotta go back to the old way.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me? This is Barbara.
And I and I see what, so we we had a conversation prior to the hearing and we were asked to keep the side conversations to a minimal. Jack and I agreed with Jim, yeah, we'll be more conscious of it. This, looking at this, now I understand why he was asking, because there's there's one right here that's like uh, Ms. McCarthy added in keeping to what, what is your first name? Where she asked what Kitty's first name is? And it's I know I am Kitty. Okay, so like that gets pulled in when really it was Appken saying.
But but I I I don't think that kind of a comment needs to be in the minutes at all.
Yeah.
But whether it, but it but.
I think that's kind of semantics, but I think.
But if it was relatively readable, I wouldn't worry about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I apologize. I I don't know what happened.
Hey, everybody's allowed one. You know, but this is your second time spelling my name wrong, and that's really what I have the issue with.
But you know, and I thought you gave me your spelling wrong after I looked at that.
Poor Jack's been changing my name and everything.
Don't forget to write in, are you are you gonna, you're still running or you still?
Whatever.
Well, but now that now there are two people.
Yeah.
Running.
Yes.
There isn't, there isn't, it it's two people for two jobs and the person who is the other person who's running.
Cluster.
He 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 he's not a a new alternate to the.
I think he's an alternate, yeah.
Excuse me? Uh, the other person that's running. Is is an alternate of the planning board.
And how how long has he been on alternate?
One year.
He's been he's been on for a whole year?
Yeah.
Because the the last meeting was the first time I thought I saw him.
He spends, he spends his winters in Florida.
Anyways, we should probably finish.
Yep.
This.
So we don't approve it.
So would you like me to take them and, I mean, put this way, Mr. Hamel, they they are legally inspectable. That's what you have to have in a hundred and seventy two hours.
I get that. My my real one of my real problems with them is that motion i- i- is not correct there.
That's.
Look, look at one hour and five minutes. I I went back to the tape a- a- and looked at what I said. I I read the minutes and said, I don't think I said that. So I went back to the tape to to make sure that I said what I thought I said.
That was the one. I sent you an email.
With 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 the notice of decision that I told you was wrong. It it.
I never got your response.
I spoke to you a- at the site visit.
Oh, okay. Um, my apologies, that did not get.
So where do we want to leave the minutes, gentlemen? Ladies? Have Jim revise them?
Yeah, just revise them.
Okay.
Okay.
So you can. They're readable.
Mm hmm. Okay, let's continue on then. Manifest? Jim, is there a manifest this month? Was there a manifest this month?
No.
Okay. Um, before we adjourn, there is one one thing that I'd like to bring up. Call it new business. But after last month's debacle about uh, the 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 bond or whatever that we asked these young ladies to to get, we went through and discussed, some people wanted zero, some people wanted a thousand, it was five thousand, twenty thousand. I think going forward, and this is a preliminary discussion about this, I'd like to go through it in detail next month, is to to for for new boards, the boards we have here, come up with a standard in our procedures that if it's twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars and you have to get the bond before you get the building permit, something to that effect, so we can get on our procedures. And when a new board, a new members come in, uh, they'll have something to deal with.
I I I think that in terms of the specifics of how much and when it needs to be posted depends upon the application. I don't think we can do it in our you you, one 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 rule doesn't fit everybody. The the the, depending on what we're trying to get.
Could we could we make a blanket rule and then if they need relief from that, if they if they need relief from that new ordinance, right? Because essentially, that's what we're doing. We're introducing that into our our procedures, right? So that's now a thing. If they need relief from that, wouldn't they just come before us and ask for relief from that for?
We 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 can't, we can waive or modify our procedures.
Right.
Okay.
But I don't think you're going to be able to come up with a procedure that is going to be meaningful and broad enough to cover all of the options.
And what are the other options? You either tear it down or you don't.
Well, no, but you 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 that that's one kind of application. But you know, if if you're going to make this, if you're not.
We're talking about an application where they're going to build a house on a piece of property and tear down the other one. Very, very seldom.
I don't think we we want to make procedures for small classes of 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 variances.
Mm hmm.
Well, I I guess we go like this. This one's come before us.
Yeah.
We set the precedence.
Mm hmm.
Moving forward, we set the precedent, we we keep up with that precedence with the market value. And now when we get our packet, we we should have enough time between the time of our preliminary hearing and the time of our public hearing to do our homework to understand what that monetary value needs to be.
Good.
Does that sound reasonable?
I'm I'm looking for a solution to the problem, you know?
Why can't we just give them a temporary occupancy permit for three months? And in that three months, they should have the other house taken down.
So part of the issue.
My problem with with that is is that enforceable?
Yeah, that well, that's.
Because that did come up last month and we did talk about possibility of that. A- a- and is that i- is it practically enforceable?
In the current conditions, I don't think, and again, I'm not gonna, I don't want this to sound like I'm I'm speaking ill of our building inspector because I'm not, but we essentially have a part-time building inspector.
Yeah.
So to give him more responsibility to try to enforce something, I don't know that that's fair or even doable without.
Yeah.
Which is.
Which is basically the select.
Right, the selectman. Yeah.
We tell them, you know, they got three months if they don't do it, let the selectmen deal with it.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be our fault.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with that.
Take it down, it's more tax money.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
It's more money coming into the town.
Mm hmm.
And the whole state says you can put two houses on the same law.
They're talking about it. That hasn't passed.
Go to Blasto. I do it all the time in Blasto.
Put put.
Two houses on the same law.
Plastow allows detached accessory.
Right.
And we don't. And we don't.
There it has to be attached.
Right. Yeah, but Plastow, right.
And someone said that they took that out before, we lose because it's a state mandate.
No, that.
I don't, I don't know, isn't it a state mandate? I'm not sure.
The the law allows the that a town can choose whether to allow attached or require only only attached or or they could, they can also allow detached if they want to.
My view is a temporary occupancy permit for three months. If they don't take the building down, give it to the selectmen, let them deal with it. And it's out of our hands.
So without without the client getting a bond?
No, no laws.
Yeah. It'll never happen for our selectmen. You you know it as well as I do, just they don't.
Let the selectmen deal with it.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. I don't know, I I I wanted to bring it up, but I'd really like to discuss it next month and so everybody think about it, at least I'd like I'd like to see us put it in the procedure. That way, when these come up, I don't know how long Roger's going to be on the board or any one of us. And that new board, I think this is the second time, and I've been on the board over twenty five years, that has come up in front of us. This is the second time. Is it, is it three? I can't remember.
You've got one that can you mention where they are?
Yeah.
On Bear Hill.
Okay.
You've got one there that is, they might be still building the house.
Yeah, I I think when I go by that, I think they're still working on that house, yeah.
That one, I I think that one should stay because the house was built in the eighteen hundreds.
Right. And the one of Woody Street, that's the one that, yeah.
And they never started that within the first year.
Right.
We gave them one year in that.
We, so we assumed.
The white and black one?
Yeah. We assumed the code enforcement officer would follow through on it, you know? And that's why I want to prevent this stuff in the future and have a standard for the board, whether whether they sit there and at at that particular meeting with the client, like you said, John, if you know, geez, if the board want, at that board wanted to reduce that amount, have them do it. At least have a standard. Roger says, you know, they could be enforced. I would think it could be. I don't know why. I'm I'm not.
I mean, i- i- if you want to propose a change to our procedures,
Mm hmm.
then why don't you write something up?
Okay.
Put it in a package for next meeting and we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Sounds like a plan, okay? But I think I I, after what happened last month, and we spent more time with.
Talking about options.
About options and just having a roadmap to get the way we got. Exactly.
Or at least get there faster, I think is not a bad thing to have.
Yeah. Mm hmm. Okay. Okay, um, let's adjourn. Thank you, people. Yep.